Planning Commission to order on Tuesday, June 16th at 6:30 with the accompaniments of the other guests from the, what is it, the Plan Review Board roll call. Fred Baum here. There's a double lap there. Deshard?
Deshard is not here.
Okay.
Fred Baum here.
Paul Arbuckle present?
John Aides present?
Alan present.
And is Lou there?
Commissioner Yang, Lou Yang will not be present tonight.
Okay. Okay. Approval of the agenda. Any corrections or additions? Staff?
Chair and Commission staff does not have any modifications to the agenda as presented.
I need a motion then for approval?
Move that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Fred? Second? Second by Deshard. Fellows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Hearing all ayes approved. Proof of all the minutes. Any corrections or additions?
Chair and Commission staff does not have any modifications to the minutes as presented.
Anybody see anything? Need approval?
Yep. Move to approve as presented.
Deshard, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alan. Fellows in favor?
Aye.
Hearing all ayes. And one abstention from Fred.
Yep.
Okay. Public hearing number E. Is there any public hearing on there, Mike?
Chair and Commission, no, we do not have public hearing scheduled for tonight.
Okay, we are on F New Business, North End District.
Sure. Chair and Commission, the item before you tonight is a direct result of two planning processes that occurred in the last year, two years. The first being the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan identified the North End, which is generally anchored by the Maplewood Mall from White Bear Avenue east to roughly Hazelwood Street or the Bruce Vento Trail to the north, 694 into the South Beam Avenue. This district was identified as a key area that the city needed to do further planning, and the city did so with the North End Vision Study. I know Commissioner Arbuckle was appointed and represented this group on that vision study process and that work group attended several meetings and developed the plan, the North End Vision Study Plan, which was also presented to the Planning Commission and adopted ultimately by the City Council. And then tonight represents the first step of the next part of this process. So, the plan led to the North End Vision, and now we need to implement a zoning district so that the vision that was created for the North End can ultimately be realized. And Rita Trapp, who is from the planning firm Hoyson &amp; Kegler, had worked on her Comprehensive Plan, and we're continuing to work with her now on the creation of a zoning district. So again, Rita's been looking at the vision study that was created by the city and trying to find the best way of how we can implement this vision. I do want to just point out, I see Mr. Kempe from the Community Design Review Board is signing on. We did invite the Community Design Review Board to attend this meeting because this is an area of interest to the design board as well. And Mr. Kempe served alongside Mr. Arbuckle on that working group. So there, I'll just ask that the chairperson, as the discussion goes on, to also take note of any design review board members that may be present and include them in the conversation. So with that, that's just kind of the preamble. We'll have plenty of time for conversations tonight. But I'm going to hand it off to Rita now, who I believe everyone here is familiar with Rita. Back when we met in person and went through the comp plan process, and I know everyone was very excited about that process. So we're excited to have Rita back working with us again. So with that, I'll hand it over to Rita to lead the conversation at this point.
Great. Thanks, Mike. I'm, again, it's happy to be back and working with you. Just making sure I'm not on mute. And then Laura Chamberlain, my colleague, who's also on the call, she'll also be presenting. So I'm going to work on sharing my screen. And then we have a couple of presentations to work through with you. All right. So the, we want to cover two elements relative to the zoning project. When we were tasked with working on this project, the goal is to support the implementation of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan's three mixed-use districts, as well as implement the North End Vision Plan. So I'm going to focus a brief discussion, kind of an overview of where we're headed relative to the mixed-use districts, and then I'm going to let Laura dive more specifically into the North End Vision Plan. So I have a little bit of background and some topics that I think I wanted to give you a preview of. And from our perspective, tonight is about kind of re-engaging the Planning Commission and the CDRB in what's happening, why we're doing it, so that you're kind of better prepared when we actually have more specific directions and zoning ordinance changes that we want to make. So this is kind of a tiptoe into these areas because I want to understand what issues you think we need to be addressing so that I can work on addressing those. So I'm going to focus on the Development Standards Review part, as I said. Just as a kind of a reminder, in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, we created three mixed-use districts. Historically, the city had only one mixed-use area, and as we were working through the Comprehensive Plan, both to respond to Met Council requirements and to respond to just the differences between different areas of the community, we actually created three mixed-use districts. The mixed-use neighborhood is the one that it's a more residential in scale. And I have circled on the right where all of those are located, and there's nine of them. Their densities are more medium and high density in character, and they're going to be more residential. And again, the mixed-use areas were just identified in the comp plan as potential areas for redevelopment. The city's not being particularly proactive in these areas, but we want to set the stage for redevelopment to occur. The other area is the mixed-use high density. So this is the Gladstone neighborhood. And this one is, the major difference between the last Comprehensive Plan and this one is the idea that the potential density increased to up to 50 units an acre in this area. And that is a direct result of being right next to the transit corridor, and that's a requirement from the regional system. And then we created the five community areas. And those are areas, again, where we expect higher densities if redevelopment were to occur. These areas may be a little more lean towards being commercial in nature. And I'm going to walk through each of these areas. The North End is one of those, and we're not going to focus, in my discussion, on the North End because that's specifically what the North End District is about. I'm focused on the other areas that have the potential. So just as a, kind of the proposed changes that we are, after reviewing the mixed-use district you have now, reviewing the development that happened at Frost and English, we are thinking that we probably, the city needs to look at making some changes because it would be difficult to achieve 25 to 50 units an acre without some changes to your current regulations. And those primarily look at building height and setbacks, and so I'll dive into that a little bit more. And for all areas in general, most communities that we're working with right now, parking standards is something else that we're taking a look at because generally parking standards are higher and resulting in larger parking areas than are really needed. And as you know from the work that you've done, you know, the more parking you require, generally the more surface parking that may end up, and then you're compromising open space and stormwater management and other elements are kind of a yin and a yang that go back and forth on the development project. So that's something that we want to kind of adjust if we can. And I'm interested to see where people's concerns are relative to parking. On the right side, I just gave you some examples of projects and approximately how many units an acre. So these are projects in Maplewood. I just wanted to give us a perspective that this is already happening in the community. So 25 to 50 isn't necessarily out of range, but we do want to be thoughtful about it and make sure that we're not impacting adjacent neighborhoods. And on that note, if we zoom into each of the areas for that are zoned, or, so I apologize, guided, mixed-use, high-density or mixed-use community, I just wanted to make sure people knew. You know, Area A, this is over off of Rice and Larpenter. So it's a commercial corridor. Then we have on Larpenter and 35E, this one is just a couple of parcels. Not a lot probably will happen, but it was guided that way. Then we have Highway 61 and 36, so the Menards and both sides of 36, kind of again along the transit corridor. We have down by 94 and Century, so south of 94, south of 3M, kind of the apartments, the car dealership extending down to Upper Afton Road. And then Area D is the Gladstone neighborhood. So when I'm talking about these changes, my thought had been that these changes would only apply to areas that are guided this way in the Comprehensive Plan. So it wouldn't be something that would change every area of the community. It would only be specific to mixed-use areas that are guided a specific way in the Comprehensive Plan. That way we can keep it more tight and not see it impact other areas of the community. So one of the changes that I wanted to talk about and just understand concerns or the appetite is building height. Currently, you limit 35 feet without a conditional use permit. And obviously, having a conditional use permit adds an extra step, a cost, and also just the potential for there to be conflicts with having a conditional use permit. The recent projects, just for perspective, at Frost and English, the apartments were 45, 43 feet in height, four stories, and then the senior apartments were 51 feet in height and four stories. Propose is to eliminate the need for a conditional use permit, just again, in these areas, and allow potentially going up to six stories is what I've suggested as a starting point. Six stories is kind of that threshold, after which we leave stick construction. We go to the more expensive construction. So generally, five or six stories is about as much as you can see before you go significantly higher. So that's kind of a general discussion. And folks may have thoughts, but that's why I wanted to bring up that discussion. I also included, just through your reference, how building height is measured in Maplewood because actually not every city is the same, so that's always something that we have to look at. And yours, again, is from the grade right in front of the building to the midpoint of a pitch roof or the top of a flat roof. So that's what this graphic just illustrates. As a reminder to all of us, because it's important to remember how it, how you measure those. Just some examples, in case that's helpful for us to talk about as we talk about, you know, what's appropriate for Maplewood in these particular areas and what might concerns be. As I identified in what I had sent out, there are additional design standards that you must have. Currently, any building must be setback 50 feet from a residential lot line, and then you have to add two feet for every foot over 25 feet and/or additional setback based on exterior wall area, and the maximum might be 100 feet. So you can go 50, 75, 100, or any increment between 50 and 100. I'm very concerned that in these districts, that might be a burden. But there's also the concern about, this is when they're adjacent to a residential lot line. So that's one of the discussions I want to get a better sense of from you is, you know, if we really are trying to increase density and target density in these areas, can we look at removing this or reducing this? Or not? And how might we mitigate it if there are concerns? I know one way that we've talked about mitigating in some communities I've been working with is the idea of using a step back so that when you go over three stories or four stories, you actually have to step the upper part of the building back, say 15 feet, so that from the ground, it doesn't feel like a solid six-story building. It more feels like that three-story building, and you can't really see the other stories because they're back a little bit. That's kind of the reason to do that is that your perspective from the car, the ground, is that the building isn't as big as it is. So that might be an approach if concerned about building height next to residential areas. And I'm going to stop here. The next thing is about parking. So before we dive into parking, I wanted to talk about this area and see what people's concerns or thoughts are so that as I go and craft this, I can get, addressing what you think is important in this area.
So staff, do we still bring something to the CDRB if we allow this so we don't have the conditional use permit?
Yeah. Chair and Commission, at this point, we would not be looking to make any changes to that requirement so to make sure the whole group has an understanding. Any commercial building, any multifamily building, actually, anything, two dwellings, duplexes and up on the residential side and all commercial buildings are required in the city to go through some level of design review. So any new construction goes to a design review board meeting. We're not initially looking at waiving any of those type of requirements, but we are looking at how the ordinance can be more prescribed and direct on what it is that the city's looking for in the type of construction. But we still anticipate design review occurring.
Okay. Oh, we still lose complete control over the size and everything if we don't, if they have, can't, don't need to have a COP, right?
Chair and Commission, so again, right now, on residential buildings, yes, three stories and above three stories, excuse me, requires that conditional use permit. You could look at it as a lack of control. I understand that. But when you, the COP process is an entitlement process in and of itself. So if you meet certain conditions, an applicant is supposed to gain approval if the council and the Planning Commission believe that they're meeting those conditions that the ordinance sets out. And then that's where we put those conditions and different requirements to approve a project. Now, we're also looking at an ordinance that Rita's referencing, developing, that would get our concerns on the front end built in so that a project is, again, the developer will know what the city of Maplewood expects to bring a project to the city so that we're not kind of reverse engineering after we go to the planning commission. So that we're, we're doing the work now to formulate a project. Commercial projects largely don't have height restrictions. I know, oh, we talked about this in the North End process. Commercial projects don't have a height requirement, and that's, there's no COP trigger based on height for commercial buildings today. There might be other things, you know, proximity to residential areas that would trigger a COP, but massing and height of a commercial building do not trigger a conditional use permit today.
But aren't there already a lot of set standards already? Are we just going to add additional ones, make sure that everything is spelled out more accurate? Is that kind of what we're thinking?
Yeah, and I would defer to Rita on some of this, but I think, again, looking at the vision that was created for the North End, we're looking to have an ordinance that implements that vision. So yeah, we're talking more specifically on building materials, building style, articulation, placement on the site, really getting into more design-type details than our zoning ordinance currently does. Anywhere, because we do have processes that we expect for the North End. And so we're trying to, this work leads to a zoning district that will tell developers what the city of Maplewood expects for new development in the North End.
No, we had that, we, oh, sorry. We had that one issue with, with the Gladstone apartment building there that we had talked about wanting to setback there, and this is, well, that was, we can't do that. That's too expensive to do that, and they ended up going straight up with that building. Remember that argument on that point?
Yeah, I know, maybe not specifically, but I know there was some design discussions. If you're talking about the first building that was built that fronts Frost.
Right.
And so, but they, you know, they do have articulation and different building materials that were expected and ultimately implemented. They did not do the stepping back as drastically. The markets between Gladstone and North End would be completely different, too. So, and we definitely want to create a zoning district that's flexible to market demands, that's reasonable, that we see development occurring. No one has an interest from the city council, from the city staff, from the Planning Commission, certainly. No one has the desire to create a zoning ordinance that can't be implemented. We want to create a district that is going to not just guide development, but foster it, encourage it. And so we're trying to take some of those, developers do not like uncertainty. They want to know what's expected of them, what they can do. And that's the, that's the pathway we're trying to point them with, the zoning district.
Right. So if we say that they have to step back, they ain't going to say, well, we can't do that if we say that in the ordinance, that that's the way it has to be? Because I know that was the argument we're having about the North End is, because they definitely wanted to have six, seven-story tall buildings right next to the road, and we're creating that tunnel effect down the road.
So one aspect that I have talked about in other communities as well is kind of an either-or choice of if you're going to be within this distance, then you have to step it back. But if you're going to be farther back, then you don't, to kind of give them options. That could be an approach. So for example, we're working up in Shoreview right now on this very topic of on arterial roads like Rice Street or Victoria, could the buildings be taller? And we're talking about the idea of, you know, next to the residential that's next to them, talking about, well, you can be taller, you either have to be back so many feet, or if you're within that area, then you've got to step it back. So at least we're not creating that wall right next to residential. So that also could be something that we look at, is that kind of giving them clear direction on what you want, but also giving them options that allow them to make the flexibility to design how they want to design. And that's one of the advantages that Mike talked about is we're going to be more clear at the front end so they don't design a whole building and then have someone come in and give a different idea of how they'd want it to be. They'd have a better sense of it before they, of what the expectation is.
But we still have that height next to the road. I can understand the residence, but then we still have the height next to the road.
It could be. Is six stories, you know, the, just I'm going to go back to the pictures. In, so again, that's one of the reasons I went back. So we're talking about North End as well as, you know, these other areas where we have it guided for community. You know, along Rice Street is six stories along the road too much. And it may be different in different areas, and that's one of the things I want to get a sense for from you is, you know, maybe Rice Street's okay, but 61 and 36, we probably want those shorter, especially given the topography in that area. I remember, you know, there is a topography aspect to it. And tonight's not about figuring out the number. It's about giving me a sense of concern, just like you're bringing up the tunnel idea. And are certain areas, are we more concerned, what are we most concerned about so that we can devise a method to address the concerns? As Gladstone, it's not appropriate at all, so we just look at the community. Gladstone, we want to keep it how it is today, which is 35 feet, and you need a COP, but we're okay along Century and Rice for them to be taller, and 35E, maybe 61 is different. I'm kind of curious on those thoughts, if people have them.
My concern would be that if we're along residential and you had a 60-foot or six-story, whatever that would be, it would probably be what, closer to any football?
75.
What would it be? 75 feet?
75, I think it's it on there.
That's what I had as a number. It can range, so we can pick a number if someone has a strong, but yeah.
Well, my concern is, my concern is that if you're right up next to residential, people better have some shade-loving plants because they aren't going to see much sun with a 70-foot building. So I think there would be two setbacks. If you're along a street, I'm not as concerned as I would be against, against a residential.
And I agree with what Fred is saying because I remember even going back to when we were doing the Gladstone area. A lot of the local residents in that area had come out, and they were not talking about plants, but they were in fact saying that, look, I can't even get sun into my house because the building will be so tall that it's going to shade my house and not get enough light into my house during summer months or even winter months for that matter. So definitely, I think when we do these changes for setbacks, we definitely want to make sure that nothing that is adjacent to a residential area has the higher height allowance. I think we should kind of cap it off at three to four stories and stay with that agenda that we have today in Gladstone. That should prevail. Now come up here by the Maplewood Mall, that's a little different story. There also, again, if you go further down on County Road D, there are residential buildings, residential homes there. So that rule should prevail there, but coming further towards the mall, yes, I can see having a six-story building there because if we were going to develop and attract any developers into that area which is quickly dying out, then we are definitely going to have to give some allowances for higher-story buildings there.
What is the max per acre that you can get on it? What is the maximum density? It's, you got 20, 25?
It's 25 to 50. So that's what it is in the Comprehensive Plan. So that's one of the reasons I kind of looked back at some of the projects you've done. You know, Frost and English was about 30 units an acre, and the Shores was 25. Season Senior was 50, so it kind of gives us a perspective of scale a little bit. And that's one of the questions is, the original mixed-use district was created for a district that was eight to 31 units an acre, and we've now jumped it. So the original mixed-use district may not quite work for some of these areas. And I'm not saying, the reason for today is to learn exactly what you're sharing with me is kind of what do we need to consider as we try and figure out ways to make things a little bit easier to make these densities work?
What is the max you can get on an acre? Is it 100 or what is, I know it's, the range on this is 25 to 50?
It's going to be 50 units an acre.
So you can't go any more than that? Like if you want, you'd have to go to a 10-story building then, right?
Well, I mean, the story of the building depends upon the number of how wide you make the building. So, you know, you can find an example of, you know, what is it? I was just reading an article that said 300 units, they were going to do a 10-story building, but now they're going to do a six-story building, but now the building is twice as long. I mean, that's, the challenge is that it's, there's a, it all works together in terms of there's no exact measurement that I can give you that says if you do this, then it'll be that. I can say that, given past history and experience, that 25 to 50 units an acre, it probably will be hard for every parcel to work, but I'm not, that's not our goal. That's one of the reasons why we could make some adjustments and account for being adjacent to residential being different than if you're along the roadway. And if you're along the roadway.
Okay.
I, I didn't ask your, answer your question exactly. So I apologize.
Right, right. Your apology.
Ha, that's not.
Chair of commission, I, I just like to add to, uh, yeah, augment what Rita said. A lot of it depends on the economics of the project and can it support underground parking? And if so, how much of it? And because if they're providing surface parking, even at a one-to-one basis per unit. That eats up a lot of land. And if they can put parking on the ground or the city has relaxed parking standards. That's going to impact how many units ultimately you can fit on one, one acre to get to your question, Paul. So there's. There's a, a lot of constraints moving on. One other thing, I, I just want to. Point out from how, like from a city staff perspective and how we look at current ordinance. I'm not advocating for any level of density or building heights at this point, but. I, I think the city over time, there's been this perception that we limit residential buildings to three stories. Where how I look at it is that the ordinance says. Anything above three stories requires a conditional use permit. That to me is not restrictive. It's another step. And in fact, our ordinance incentivizes density in both the R three. Multiple family district and the mixed use district that we currently have in place that Rita referenced that serves the eighth to thirty-one. District primarily in Gladstone and Hillcrest at Larpinder, uh, way there. Both those ordinances give you, give a developer incentives to build above three stories. They're, they're able, the ordinance says you can build more units if you go above three stories. Um, and in the R three district, that's been in there for many, many years. That's not a new, uh, a new policy. I'm not asking for the planning commission to agree or disagree with it, but I just want everyone to understand that. The city hasn't been trying to, um, prevent or discourage residential buildings above three stories. Um, it's just, that's what the market has brought us, uh, but we are starting to see those pressures. Even in Gladstone, uh, we have developers looking at the buildings. That they would want to go above three stories and we've seen it already occur, but, uh, new projects. That, that's the kind of height they're looking at. So again. Not advocating for the planning commission to lean one way or the other, but I just want to add again, from staff's perspective, how, how we look at that.
Yeah, but isn't that kind of knowing that Maplewood doesn't like you to build above so many stories? So they say. Well, I'm not even going to think about Maplewood because they won't let me build above four stories, right? Isn't that kind of on the?
Chair of commission, I don't know if that's a perception in the development community. I know that's something that gets brought up. Um, but I know like new staff people, when they come and read our ordinance or I don't, I. When you look at our policies in place, no, I don't, I don't believe that's the perception that Maplewood is giving based on our policies that are on the books.
Okay.
I was going to move on to parking. Are there other considerations I should keep in mind as we kind of. Try and figure out what the right approach is relative to building height or setbacks?
Well, I think it's, I think it's important. Like they say that we be aware of the close to the residence that we're at that and. And I think once we start getting over anything over three or four stories that. You know, you, you gotta set that back or do something different so that doesn't make that tunneling effect if they have buildings on both sides. Cause it. You know, they want to build right next to the roads and we got these corridors that we're driving down that, you know. Buildings are so close.
Yep. Okay. Um, obviously not the end of the conversation, but a good start for me to understand what the perspective of the planning commission is. I'm going to talk a little bit about parking. Um. I'm going to quickly go through a couple of slides just to kind of. Uh, talk about why parking is important. Um. One, and, and Mike just brought it up, that it consumes land. This is the target over in Shoreview on Lexington. Um, and three years ago, they had parking, um, that they weren't using and they now have a development on that site. So parking consumes land. Both from a commercial and a residential perspective. And if it's not being used. Um, then it may not be beneficial. It's not a great, uh, benefit if it's never filled with cars. Um, it affects affordability. This is, uh, in case you haven't seen it lately, I'm sure you've heard about it over the years, but surface parking. You know, is about three thousand per space. Uh, parking garage. Is about twenty thousand to thirty thousand per space and underground parking is twenty-five to forty thousand per space. So. Not only does it consume land, but the more our parking requirements. Um, that we have, the more that we're adding cost. So it affects affordability. Um, it impacts the environment. Um, and I know that's important to us in Maplewood. Um, so the more impervious surface that we create, uh, the more stormwater we need to manage. Um, and generally, as I had said before, you know, the more surface parking or parking overall, the less open space we can have, the more stormwater we need to manage. So. It's more about the idea of getting it right. Um, it also causes conflict. As you know, when parking doesn't work, um, then we certainly hear about it in the city when there's not enough. Um, both private neighbors can have conflicts and then there's the expectation that the city can solve parking problems. So. By all means, um, it goes both directions and we need to be really thoughtful about parking. Um, it also is the business operations. Um, there's the perception and the reality, uh, people don't like to walk too far. Um, so when we talk about commercial or restaurants, there's that perception that there's no parking. Um, but oftentimes there is and are kind of, uh, we're not always accurate. And there's the perception of customers and the, the perception of business owners. So. All of these things just mean parking is important and something that we talk a lot about in the planning. Planning world and you do as you talk about projects. Um, so strategies to manage parking, um, right sizing it, adjusting minimums and maximums. Um, context-based adjustments, which I'll talk about today just a little bit, just to kind of preview and test the waters and see what you think. There's also something called transportation demand management, the idea of having a plan. To try and manage how much demand there is for parking rather than always focusing on the supply side. So. The easy answer is to just make sure we have enough parking spaces. Maybe there are things that a business owner or an apartment could do to manage the demand, um, so that we don't need so much supply. Um, relative to multifamily dwelling, one aspect, um, that we talked about with Mike, and I was thinking that this. Be overall, not necessarily specific to the North End or specific to mixed use. Uh, it's just the idea of right now, you use two spaces for every housekeeping unit. So that's every unit. And at least one of those can be, has to be enclosed. One element that many communities are going towards is the idea of using the number of bedrooms instead of the number of units. So if you had a apartment building that had a hundred and fifty, um, one bedrooms. You would still require three hundred spaces, but if you had an apartment building that had one hundred and fifty-two bedrooms, you'd still require the same number of. Parking spaces, but really a two bedroom of the same number of units is going to maybe generate more parking. So one element that cities are looking at is going towards a bar, a bedroom count. And that typically is also what developers use. When they do their traffic studies is that they say, well, this is how many bedrooms we have. So this is how many parking spaces we have. Um, so that's one element that. Is probably worth looking at. And in particular for the North End where we're trying to. Um, have more density and have transit be available. Um. Also in the commercial area, uh, as we took a look at it, it feels like there. There probably is a room to maybe adjust the parking a little bit to require fewer spaces. Um, and so you don't have to get into these numbers per se, but I'm kind of curious about perceptions about parking. You know, are there areas where it feels like there isn't enough parking? Those are good for me to know about. Are there, do you agree that. We probably have more parking than we really need and we could make some adjustments, uh, to help make that a little bit better. Uh, and then I wanted to just identify some context-based adjustments. Uh, and that's the notion that when a particular building, either commercial or multifamily is near to transit. So the, um, the B R T line, a quarter mile of a local bus, that you could just have an overall statement that they get to reduce the amount of. Off, off-street parking requirements. Cause many people will pick. Those units specifically so that they don't have to have a car all of the time. And then it is common to look at senior housing or income and reduce the parking. So these are just things that are things to think about. And then relative to transportation demand management, it's the idea again of. Uh, identifying strategies to reduce the demand for parking rather than always increasing the supply. Um, so some of the things that we've been talking about lately, um, is. If someone would have a car share stall and a, a method by which. Residents of the apartment complex, for example, would be able to use that, you could actually reduce the number of parking spaces. So some people may choose not to have a car. If they'd access a car share, bike parking, um. And unbundling, separating out the rent for a parking space, because that generally does lead to people. Not wanting to pay extra for the parking space. Um, and that would only be good for underground parking. Or assigned parking, but that idea as well. Uh, I do want to mention that we have been talking about the impact of things like autonomous vehicles and. And the challenge, and even this car share idea right now, given where we are with the pandemic, that's a challenging one to see because we don't really know. How things are going to change relative to parking. Um, over the next couple of years, you know, are people going to be comfortable car sharing? Are they going to be comfortable? How is transit going to come back? All those elements. So probably our focus is more on those other elements, but it's something to continue to watch. Um, and evaluate, uh, and see. So I, I don't know that we're not looking at a whole overhaul. Um, but we are thinking particularly in those areas where. They are uses that we would see in those mixed use districts that making these adjustments. Would probably make the economics work better, um, and make things, uh, more possible for redevelopment to occur. Um, and again, tonight I'm not looking for very specific numbers, just. You know, does this make sense? Do you have really concerns I should know about, about starting to make adjustments?
I, I have, I have a thought, a pro, my thought in regards to my expectations or what I've observed is that. If the, none of, these apartments and, and these buildings, high density buildings are going to be, they're not low income buildings. And generally the people who use transit are people who don't have cars because they can't afford cars. Most areas where people are making fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year, aren't using transit. Um, even if they live next to a transit center. So the, the, there's a lot of assumptions that. You limit parking, people will find alternatives. But if that doesn't happen, then the city's really. Screwed with more cars than they can, can manage. And you see that in residential areas now where. There's a family that has six, seven, eight cars and, you know, slammed into a parking lot in the street. Um, so. I guess that would be my big concern is, is how much of an assumption we're making that transit equals more transit riders.
Okay.
I'll also add into that situation that, uh. With Minnesota, I know we keep pushing and I've been hearing it now for years that, hey, we want to be more. Uh, bicycle friendly or walk friendly and high density areas, but. In the United States, people are not giving up on their cars that easily. Including the fact that, yes, you mentioned, my point, uh, when I was reading through this thing is also. That the pandemic is changing the mindset of people in terms of using, uh, buses, light rail. Uh, ride share of cars, Uber and all those, they're all getting hammered right now. Uh, it took almost eleven, twelve years for the effects of nine eleven. To bring back transit to a ninety-one percent level. Of what it used to be before, uh, nine eleven in New York City. And now all of a sudden with the COVID happening, it's gone back to square one. So as we make developments in Maplewood, yes, there will be some of these opportunities to reduce parking. But ideally I'm not a believer that it's necessarily going to really reduce our demand. My thought process was that when I go to Europe, I see what they call a city center, not downtown, but a city center where there is a. High density buildings in a suburb. That city center area also has shared parking ramps. So there is a grocery store next by that is possibly, uh, restaurants, there are, uh, apartment buildings. All of those people are sharing a common parking ramp. And I think that's something that we should really consider here for Maplewood going down the road. So that yes, I saw your statistics that parking ramps are expensive. But I still believe that it takes less real estate as you're going up. And also be able to account and accommodate the needs of the people who are going to be in that area. Because you know, honestly, right now, if I had to go to a restaurant and I couldn't find a parking spot, I'm not going. So I think we really need to be very cognizant of, uh. How many parking spaces we allocate. And I am a big proponent of parking ramps because I've. Seen them successfully work out in Europe and it's a success there. I don't see why not. We can do the same thing here.
I think, I think the reduction for assisted living homes and that would be acceptable, you know, for. Uh, you know, retirement homes and that because. You know, all the discussions we've had, they've been able to reduce that because most of the people there don't have vehicles. That might be something to look at.
Well, and, and the change in bedroom, just even that change would make things hopefully closer. Um, to make it, allow it to be more calibrated to the mix of units in each apartment. Um, rather than just a standard that goes across to everything. And that also would help account for. Senior buildings or assisted living or those types of things. What I'm hearing from you is. Kind of the general idea of making tweaks related to what we're used to makes sense, not maybe making so many tweaks to. New ideas as we're in the middle of, uh, maybe a change in how people work and play and shop. Or if we're going to make a change, we might make a change that's very specific, like to the North End, but not make a change that goes to everybody. Um, cause there's so many differences between the different areas. Is that kind of a good summary of things to think about?
You're basically, you're basically just talking about the high density areas. Are you talking about across the board and all? Making this in all, in all areas.
So for the parking, I was thinking about making adjustments that would affect any. Use that are like these. Um, but then again, that's still commercial and high density. I'm not talking about changing. We, we weren't charged with looking at single family or townhomes or things like that. Uh, this is more for. These specific uses that I've highlighted. Um, if that helps.
I think one, one spot per bedroom for residential apartments would be fine. I think the potential direction for commercial office and for. Shopping centers is fine. I would back off on the restaurant, I think, a little bit. Otherwise, I think we're, we've got some good direction.
What about high demand, like during holiday things? Is that, that's something we don't need to consider because. It's just a waste for the other three hundred and fifty days of the year, right?
Yes, and I think that things are going to change potentially and things that already changed on what used to be. High demand days, even without the pandemic, the last few years hasn't seen. The same high demand during the Christmas season that you have, I'm not saying it didn't increase, but we don't have quite the bubbles that. Um, we have seen because the market has changed so much with the online shopping and how they're spreading out things that I don't know that that. That Thanksgiving to Christmas period is the same as it used to be anyway.
Well, I know I can't find a parking spot at Menards a lot of times right now.
Yes. That is probably too. It's amazing how full those places are. Everybody's home to make improvements.
That's right.
Any other concerns about parking? As I said, this was kind of an introduction, a way for me to understand, um, your. Your thoughts, your concerns and be able to address those and take into consideration your experience. Otherwise, I'm gonna, yeah.
What about, what about charging? And I know that we've never, ever charged, but a lot of places you go, they charge for parking. Would that, would that stop people from coming or would that. Make potential for people saying, well, I better do other arrangements because I don't want to pay for my parking. I'll take the bus then or something.
If we're talking, if we're talking a commercial area, um, that's certainly something. That people do do. I'm not sure that the character of Maplewood would lend itself to the charging. Um, a ramp might be an exception, you know, just because of how those work, but I think people would be surprised, uh. At this stage, you know, maybe if we created the North End and how we envision with a really walkable environment and a destination, it might be different. But people generally expect the charging to occur when you're in a. A walkable downtown kind of environment, not a suburban environment, at least right now. So. Um, other than chain, charging for, as I said, a ramp or for multifamily as part of your rent, I'm not sure that that. Is quite, um. Quite appropriate right now, at least the character of the community as it is today.
Yeah, I know we've always been against it, but would that, would that?
It definitely, oh, it definitely changes practices. So as you, uh, you know, our offices are, are based downtown. Um, and so when, uh, when parking rates go up or when ramp costs go up, people do change their habits. Um, and that is why, one of the reasons it works is that the cost reflects better what the demand is and it adjusts demand. So it definitely would. So it definitely would, um but I, I think it would be harder to do right now with the character Maplewood has today.
Right, right. I agree. It was hard to take you serious too when you said do do.
Sorry. Trying to talk. Okay, I, if there's no other parking, then I'm gonna exit out of my presentation and then Laura will talk about the north end specifically.
Thanks Rita.
Yeah.
If you were speaking, we are not hearing you at this point.
Hey, can anyone hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Sorry, having some issues with headphones, microphones, all of that fun stuff that we're getting used to. Um, I am going to share my screen. Uh, so as Rita said, I'm going to walk us through um the North End Mixed Use District, uh specifically how Maplewood is looking at addressing the um what was set up within the comprehensive plan for the North End um and then was uh more teased out and envisioned through the North End Vision Plan. And the, kind of the basis of the North End Vision Plan, just to give a reminder of all of that, um was to set up a vision with um set of then design guidelines. Um, now, we have been tasked with, okay, we have this great vision, how do we actually implement it? Um, and we've been working with city staff on that implementation side of things and the types of guidance, design guidelines and uh envisioning that was within the vision plan really lends itself to um of the creation of a form-based district within the North End. Um, and so that's what we're gonna talk about today. See, here we go. Uh, so just a quick outline of the topics I'll be covering. Uh, an overview of conventional zoning versus form-based zoning, how they differ and um what, how they are utilized in different ways. Um, and then how the form-based zoning fits in within the North End Vision Plan. Um, and then establishing the framework for that North End District. And then uh looking at what's, what our next steps are. Uh, so if, along the way, if you have any questions of um how we came to uh a decision or what direction we're going in, please feel free to uh pipe up. Otherwise, we'll try to get through everything quickly and have discussion at the end, so. Um, so conventional zoning, also referred to as use-based zoning, um that's what we're all familiar with. This is just a snapshot of part of the city's existing zoning map. It is regulated based off of land uses and separates uses into different zones. Um, the zoning, the tools within the regulations um are, it can be fairly, um they, they regulate the uses, but as far as what the look and feel of those areas is, it is kind of blunt on those regulations. So density, lot coverage, building height, setbacks, buffer yards, those are the types of things that influence how the spacing and how it actually ends up looking. But the physical form of an area is not really defined through use-based zoning. Instead, it's the uses that are more regulated. So it is an effective tool in preventing unwanted types of development or certain uses from coming into certain areas. Um, but it doesn't necessarily uh ensure um the character and form that uh you might be looking for in a uh kind of more highly planned area. So a form-based zoning, uh as the name would imply, is uh focused on the form of the area first. Um, land use is still considered, um it's not completely disregarded, but land use and the uses on within buildings and structures comes secondary to the form of those structures. So the standards and parameters of that form um shape and regulate the relationship between your public space, your um green space, your right-of-way, um as well as the private development. Um, so those standards include how close to the curb the, or the lot line, the front lot line that your buildings need to be. How much of a building needs to have a frontage on the street versus further back in the yard. Um, different materials, uh and your uh facade, um articulation. You can get really, really detailed in what all of those different design forms are or can keep them more general. Um, as well as the location of different elements such as parking or even access to the site. Um, typically, form-based zone, zoning is used as a way to promote interconnected street networks um and pedestrian scale blocks. Because um the form of the buildings is what's being regulated, uh the uses within those buildings, whether it's an office or um maybe a restaurant on the ground floor and residential above, it's going to all fit together regardless of what use is next to what use, as would be a concern within uh your conventional zoning districts. Um, and typically, form-based zoning also uses a combination of written regulations as well as a lot of uh diagrams and illustrations. So specifically for the North End, um the North End Vision Plan set up um a very ambitious vision for redevelopment of the area, both in the short term and the long term. Um, and within those, within that vision, um wanted to establish the ability for um flexibility in development, but still creating an area that is um distinct and a, has a sense of place that people will want to come to. And the design guidelines set forward in the North End Vision Plan uh very much lend themselves to the types of regulations that you would be seeing within a form-based district. Um, so your vision plan, uh these are just little snapshots of different elements from the vision plan. Um, transit-oriented development, having a street hierarchy, um ensuring pedestrian and bicycle circulation, uh creating green space and amenities, especially connected green space. Uh, looking at land use and development density as well as addressing parking um kind of more at a district level uh rather than maybe an individual use level. So what we have been looking to do is to set up our form-based district so that it can adequately address all of these different elements. So our framework for the North End District, um creating those form-based standards kind of fall into two different camps. Uh, we have to write, write, excuse me, establish standards for circulation and access. Um, and that includes the establishment of the street network. And then uh from that street network, actually creating different street typologies where different street types perhaps have different roles in how they function within the district. So a connector street um will have a different function than your kind of neighborhood main street where you have a lot of cafes and things along those lines, uh more pedestrian oriented. Um, with circulation and access, we also want to talk about blocks, um how we establish the sizing of blocks for new um developments uh and, and access priority with curb cuts and driveway locations. Um, and then buildings, after we have the establishment of kind of our circulation and access network, then we can look at individual buildings and how those interact within that larger um network. And the placement and frontage of buildings, where they belong on the site, and then the size and bulk of the buildings themselves, once they've been placed. And then on top of that, any form and facade um elements. So that is the overall framework that we are um with our approach for the North End District.
Laura, so what you're saying is all those things will kind of be written out and, and what our requirements are?
Yes, exactly. Um, so they'll each have different sets of requirements, um and one thing about form-based districts is that they often, because it has such an interaction with uh uh your right-of-way, how the street itself looks, um and the feel of the public space as well as the private space, um it has elements within it that are kind of covered uh typically by subdivision. So it's a little bit of subdivision and zoning brought together into one set of regulations. Um, and that is unique for this district. Um, uh, and any, as, any um standards that we establish would not negate your traditional subdivision code or anything along those lines.
Would this be too rigid though? Would this be pretty rigid though for developers to, to say if they wanted to build something, they'd have to fall within these standards or is that not an issue?
Um, so the intention is for us to um create these standards so that we can end up with a vision or end up with something that can achieve the vision that the city has, uh went through the visioning process um to establish. However, to allow enough variability in, um for instance, I'll move to this next slide. Um, we have some general street typologies established or what we're thinking should be the um kind of hierarchy of streets. Right now, we're not showing what individual blocks would look like. Um, the North End Vision Plan uh showed a lot of sub, or smaller blocks. Uh, for instance, the St. John's Boulevard um uh extension uh between Canard and South Lawn, that was cut up into either three or four different blocks um vertically and then another one horizontally between St. John's and uh Beam Avenue. We want to allow the flexibility of, if a developer comes in and they decide, you know, here three blocks works, um over here maybe establishing six blocks is better. For the types of buildings and the mix of uses that we want to propose, okay, with that in mind, what are the things that we want to make sure are in our standards so that we can achieve the vision, but also allow that flexibility um on the developer's side? Um, and so to looking at these different street types, we've highlighted those areas of the North End that are likely to redevelop. They are um kind of bound between County Road D, White Bear Avenue, Beam, um and Canard and then uh um not really involving the legacy um development or the uh too much the um uh the library and park over here. Um, and so our different hierarchies would, of street typology would determine those, those form and uh those form standards would apply for each of these. So your, how close the building has to be to the front of the road, the road frontage on a minor art, or a major collector or minor arterial is likely going to be a little bit more setback than what you would want to have along your neighborhood main street. Um, also, the different, how the, that right-of-way is used, um how many driving lanes, if there's on-street parking, if there are bike lanes or um bike trails, uh other pedestrian facilities, the layout of those elements would differ between these different typologies. And with the direction from staff, the, these street networks, um and especially establishing any new streets would be as development requires it. It's, this is not a proactive um ambition on the city's side to try to build streets and then have the development occur around them. Um, so.
Say that again.
That, yep, so um we're establishing these street typologies. However, we're not, the city is not interested in um building these streets before development comes. It is going to be as development drives the need for um uh the streets and other infrastructure within. Did that make sense?
Yes, but you almost have to somehow let them know that that's what the plan is because let's say we're working at the, the Birch Run there, you know, that building right now runs all the way through that road. But it'd be nice if they knew that when they ever decide to redevelopment, that we want to have a road that runs through there to connect St. John's Boulevard, that they don't put the building in the middle of the road again.
Yes, yep, definitely. And um that has been laid out um to an extent within the North End Vision Plan and then this would establish that any redevelopment would have to um fit within this sort of framework.
Just jump in on that specifically. That's why we, during the North End Development, we put pretty good um efforts to reach out to every business and property owner in, in this area to tell them, you know, A, on the front end, provide us input on the plan, but then also as the plan was developed, you know, to give us feedback. And Paul, to your specific example of Birch Run, uh as a result of this plan adoption, we've been meeting with that property owner several times and they're, they're fully aware of, you know, the potential road that would go through what are existing buildings. And um so, yeah, I think it's, it's what Laura's saying and on a policy side, we, we get everything in place, but it's also um just kind of good old fashioned discussions and networking with those property owners and continued discussion uh to keep our vision at the forefront. And that, that's where uh staff comes into play in continuing to dialogue with those property owners.
But that, but then if you're taking uh the commercial property there to put a road in, there has to be something allowed in the budget for the purchase of that property then because that'll be a, a, a road, a city road, not a, not a driveway or anything that the developer, that'll eventually become a city road, right?
Uh, it depends. There's, there, it, it won't be a driveway, but uh there's all kinds of ways that a road like this could be built. And yeah, public uh road could be an option, a private road could be an option. I know that we're gonna be continuing these type of discussions with their engineering staff to know what they're comfortable uh with. But also as a development comes to the city, that, those are type of negotiations that we tend to have. And we haven't done that in the most recent past, but when the city had more uh flats, uh single-family homes and, you know, some of like the twin home developments, you know, there was a lot of negotiation between should a road be private, should it be public? Um, and typically, private roads are still built to city standards, but then they're maintained by an association. So there, there's lots of ways to get to achieve this type of vision. But yeah, we're, we're trying to articulate what that preferred pathway forward is. Um, and so that, that's part of what this discussion is tonight and continued discussions, ultimately what lands in an ordinance.
Right, right, because I'm pretty sure the developer prefer that the city pay for a new road than them.
Um, so kind of moving along with that discussion, you can see in our diagram here, um like our neighborhood streets that are going north and south. We don't know exactly if there are going to be streets right here. Um, right now, we're showing it going through the mall. There's, but, and that is. There's, but, and that is what is being shown within the North End Vision Plan. But it's not like written in stone. It's more of if at a time that development maybe consolidates what is happening at the mall, or there's total redevelopment of the site at that time, then the city wants to ensure that they have the mechanisms in place to make sure that these, this road network would be put in place. So looking a little bit more at that. If we're looking at existing and possible like main streets, looking at what those different blocks would be, we'd also need to make sure that there are, as I had talked about before, some subdivision within these areas. Because we don't, having a 1,200-foot block to walk down is not walkable, and it's not a comfortable experience for pedestrians. And so you want to make sure that your block sizes are somewhere between 200 and, or excuse me, 250 and 500 feet. The North End Vision Plan, the graphic illustration that was shown, showed blocks that were around the size of 300 feet. So this is just to give an idea of this area down here would likely need to be at least one block, have one block in the middle here or going horizontally, as well as probably three or four blocks vertically. Some more examples of what we will be establishing within the form-based district will be those for each street typology, these kind of standards for public space. So typically written as a cross-section or something along those lines, showing for these different street types. How, like I said before, how many bike, or if there should be bicycle facilities, what kind of boulevards and landscaping within the right-of-way. Beyond that, these cross-sections will likely also show the Build 2 Zone, and how far back the buildings need to be, and that kind of private front yard as well. And that's where you can have your cafe space or other elements, as well as for maybe town homes, you actually do have a private front yard space. Finally, looking at the different approaches within the form-based, focusing on the building form itself. So as we talked about before, the placement of where, how close the building must be to the front yard, or to, excuse me, to the street yard, that is typically referred to as the Build 2 Zone. What percentage of the front yard needs to be taken up by a building? Other elements can include building height and this. For these different street typologies, as we had talked, as you had all raised, talking through with Rita, perhaps it's best if, you know, you have a height limit in that Build 2 Zone to three or four stories, and then everything else, any other heights beyond that need to be stepped back, so you don't have that kind of canyon feel down the roads. You know, these are all the types of standards that we'll be establishing within the form-based code, or excuse me, the form-based district. As well as establishing where your off-street parking is located, if there's park, or excuse me, sharing of parking facilities. And then another element that really builds into kind of the the feel as people are walking down your streets or something along those lines is the building transparency and articulation, meaning you don't want just a completely blank, flat surface as you're walking along. You want visual interest as you're walking along to make it feel like you're not just going past a blank wall. So the elements that are, that we are establishing, we've set up this framework for our for our street typology. We're creating those specific standards for each street, for the block length, the circulation and access, the location of parking, your building frontage. What's next is for us to establish some of those additional building regulations, building size and form and facade. And this is just a clip of what guidance was shown within the North End Vision Plan through the design guidelines. It is our intention to take the one, those guidelines that are appropriate and make them into standards. So that is everything. I'm happy to go back and walk through any elements that you have questions on.
What is the intent on this? Are we asking that we go to this form-based zoning?
Sorry, would you repeat that?
What is the intent of this tonight? Are you, are we seeking the Planning Commission's endorsement of form-based zoning rather than the conventional zoning?
Yes, so to a certain extent, the intention for tonight was kind of to bring you all up to speed on how we got from the North End Vision Plan to the direction of the form-based district. Wanting to make sure that our approach with that is you feel we'll accomplish what was set out in the vision plan, and then as we go forward, that way we don't have to kind of rehash, okay, what is a form-based district? Why are we doing this? So this is going to just bring you up to speed, and hopefully we'll have, I think by the next Planning Commission meeting, more of those specific standards for you to kind of sink your teeth into.
And just to add to it, the intent has always been back to the comprehensive plan, which was done through the North End Vision Plan, that you would probably need a different tool than your conventional zoning to achieve what you were thinking for that end. It would be challenging to create a district that focuses on creating things based on aesthetic versus use without using a form-based tool.
Are there any other cities using a form-based tool?
There are other cities in Minnesota using form-based districts. Nobody's using a form-based code. So we're working on one right now in Shoreview. Burnsville, heart of the city, if you're familiar with that, that one has form-based code elements to it, the specific district that actually created Burnsville, heart of the city. St. Louis Park has a form-based district that they're working with right now. So this is a, it's kind of a tool that you use in Minnesota more on a district level than you do on a whole citywide level to create these types of things.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to reiterate, reemphasize that. Yeah, this would be a tool for this specific area, the north end of the city. And this is just your first touch point. This is again, an introductory discussion about actual zoning language potentially, and you know, the high concepts of what we're looking to do. But when we start drafting the actual language, that will be brought back to you. You'll have multiple opportunities here to shape what this zoning district will be in the end. But yeah, and I do want to point out, this was originally on your agenda in March, and obviously, some things in the world happened that that meeting got canceled. And now with the other development applications that we had that didn't allow us to get to this sooner, now we're back in it, and now we're ready to get, dig in this summer, and we're really going hard on zoning code and zoning code updates with you at your next several meetings.
This is a form-based district. Is there another firm that they use for designing these that I have another name for like Limbo Base District, or are there other just ways to organize that? Or is this, this is because this is the way we want to go down this direction, is the form base, right?
Yeah, so our approach is, has been to refer to this as the North End Mixed Use District. And it will likely kind of stand on its own within your ordinances. Definitely referring to any application processes or whatever that the rest of your code uses, but it, it will kind of be its own entity with its own list of uses that are appropriate within the North End. And then, as I mentioned before, some of those public elements, as well as the private development design standards, all mixed in there.
My question was, is are there other ways to design this? We're using the form-based one to do this. Is there other, other way, you know, different names for different ways to organize this? Like is there another, that form base, but is there like a rigid base standard? I mean, is there other options?
Rita, do you know?
No, I think I understand your question. In the, in zoning codes in the planning profession, there are not that many different types of codes in districts. There's, form-based is a, is a name that's a trend maybe the last 10 years or so, as a way of describing how you use zoning to create how the building looks. Otherwise, it's the Euclidean or the conventional, which uses the use-based tool. Those, there really isn't like, like if you hired a different firm, they'd come back to you with a different name of a different type of zoning that you could use to achieve this end. The only other way of doing it is to create a mixed-use district, and then more do what you're used to, is you list all the uses that are allowed, and then you say, well, you can do this and this and this. What that misses is the interaction between the public and the private space and defining streetscape and some other elements, which is why this was the tool that's being used. And as I said, it does exist as an entire, some cities have an entire, their entire zoning is this. But in Minnesota, traditionally, we're usually using this for very defined areas, where we can know what we're trying to achieve and kind of guide that area in this way.
If we write it like this, this rigid, will we have to still have people come before us and want agents and say, well, I really don't want to do it that way, I'd rather do it this way? Is that going to create that issue?
Whether or not, you're asking if you'd still have variances, or if you would have a PUD. The intent is that you wouldn't, because you are allowing such flexibility in the use that you're being much more defined in the, in the how it looks. That would be the goal, is that you're not having a lot of variances or a lot of exceptions. Just like anything, as you know, it's hard to get everything perfectly calibrated. You think you do it, and you may need to make some adjustments as you have projects come through, but in general, this should be enough to get you what you want without being too rigid, that every project that comes in needs to do something that doesn't follow the rules. That's the intent.
Yeah, and I think also the intent of this is to establish on the city's side what this area can look like and should look like, without the city itself developing a master plan for the area, you know? Wanting to allow those developers to be, this be a development-driven process.
It looks pretty good. I think it's good work on your part.
Thank you.
Bill, did you have anything you wanted to add or questions?
Pete?
Yeah, Bill, yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering, when she was talking about a street that's 1,200, 1,200 feet is unwalkable, so it has to be broken up into segments. Why is that? If you got to walk 1,200 feet anyway, why, why does it make a difference if there's an intersection that you come across every once in a while?
I suppose the any distance could be walkable. So I think it's more of the perception of what's around you as you're traveling that, you know, quarter mile or so, is, are are you walking past just an entire series of parking lots? Or are you walking past maybe one really long storage building or something like that? Or as you're walking along, are there other opportunities for interaction with storefronts or public art or something along those lines? If that can't be achieved, it doesn't necessarily need to have the blocks broken up to that, you know, 300, 400-foot standard, but there needs to be some sort of visual articulation as well as breaking up of buildings, so that you don't just have a solid wall or something along those lines.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, one advantage is the hotel, if you designed, we want the hotel in that one corner, so they're all rested up, they can go that distance.
Right, you want them to get to the hotel, and I think the premier park is going to be, or look, is shown over there on the vision plan graphic as well. All right, any other final thoughts on this before, well, next, I believe at the next Planning Commission meeting or sometime soon, we'll be coming forward with a few more actual standards for you to review.
Do you have an email or anything that, or want to interject anything, or anybody else want to interject anything that we could, any suggestions or anything that we could add in?
Yep, absolutely. So I will, I'll have Mike send out to everyone our contact information.
We can do that, but also you can use me as your
We can't hear you, Mike.
Brian can hear.
You sound far away.
I'll get a little closer, or shout louder. But use me as your point of contact.
Okay. Okay. What if I'm afraid to tell you?
We should talk offline about that.
Okay.
Mike is very intimidating, so.
Terrifies me. Anybody else have any other questions or anything to do, interject? Alan, you've been quiet all night. Alan?
He's sleeping.
Alan, did you have anything you wanted to say or anything? No? Hello?
I think he's on a continuous loop.
Is he? Yeah, he's sleeping.
You're off mute now, you can talk.
I guess he has nothing. Does anybody else have anything?
No, I don't.
Chair is good.
Alan's good.
There, there he is. Was there anybody else that was online or anything else, Mike, that wanted to say anything, or that's not open, uh, open forum or anything, or?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
We have two callers in.
I have no speaker.
That's at your direction.
Okay, we, we, we are limiting the amount of talk time, so. Did you, did you, go ahead, caller.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Kevin Burgland, Citizens Reporter News. You can see some of the shows on YouTube at Local News Maplewood. First of all, you have to know that, you know, when you're listening over the line like this and not seeing pictures of the speakers, you listen carefully to the sound. And what you, what I found out is that the two consultants, you, I thought the Planning Commission brought up a lot of significant points, but the consultants dismissed and trivialized almost everything. Also, the city staff member there seemed to be annoyed when good questions were raised. And I thought most, most of your questions should have really been, they were significant questions about about the character of Maplewood and they should have been discussed in full. So thank you for bringing them up. There's another problem with the, the way you're doing this is there's a big delay between what's on the screen and what's on the phone line. So it's hard to pay attention to both because you have to have them both up. The point is, I think, I, these consultants seem to not really appreciate what kind, what, what kind of character Maplewood has. I think that if Maplewood residents wanted to live on 38th in Chicago and they would have to experience rioting and police slicing tires and firebombing buildings and National Guard charging and shooting and National Guard arresting CNN reporters and people of the likes of Paul Schnell chasing reporters around, I think they would live on Chicago and 38th or some similar community like that in Minneapolis. Now, the consultants, they probably have their headquarters in Minneapolis and they probably are all fired up about, I guess, the, the great character of Minneapolis living. But I think you brought up the point that they need to pay attention to. And I think instead of addressing them, they dismissed it. And I think you said that you wanted to have it be very clear what they're, because they wanted a sense, and that sense they should put in writing instead of just some gobbledygook and said, is this what you're thinking? I'm thinking, they need to focus a little bit better if they want to be Maplewood's consultants, which they can do. The other thing is the COVID issue. The COVID, as some of you members on the Planning Commission mentioned, that changes everything. I mean, it's like the consultants have, or the city staff member have not been living in COVID. Everything is going to change. Building redesign is going to change, is going to be a new normal. There's going to be a new tran, a way of transportation. The city, for example, they, they allowed everybody who they had impounded their cars to take their cars out for free. It's, if the city manager of Maplewood wants, if she's at all concerned about equity.
My speaker is not walking.
Pardon me?
Anymore.
I, I still, I still can't catch that. It, you know, the, the, the line is, I guess, kind of poor. But there, there's a whole new thing. And if you're going to be building all these buildings, and I think the Planning Commission was hinting to this, with all these elevators in the era COVID or the new normal, which is going to occur, it's not like this is going to end on July 15th. There's a whole new way of looking at planning. And if anything, we shouldn't be going hard right now, as the city staff member said. We should be sitting back and reflecting and trying to see what the new normal is. I'm not quite so sure that the, the city staff member or the consultants know what the final new normal is. Watching all this on television, it's going to be dramatically different. So I, there's a lot more to be said, but I do want to thank you for raising these questions and really doing your due diligence. And I think the professionals need to step back and take note of what you said and try to, I think this has been recorded, I heard, and try to at least try to reevaluate what you said and listen carefully instead of just trivializing. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time. And that's all I got right now. And thank you, Planning Commission, for making this available. Although, you know, I've seen a lot of these Zoom meetings and things like that. And I've seen even the city manager and some of the members up at Maplewood consider North St. Paul backwards. I can assure you, North St. Paul on their communication on these meetings is, does a lot better job than the communication up at Maplewood. But again, thank you for taking public comment. I, I do appreciate that. And thank you again, and bye now.
Okay, well, I think we can move forward on this, Mike. What, what should we do? Just look forward to the, the things coming forward or?
Here on commission, there is no action required or requested tonight. This item was informational, as we mentioned. Attention of tonight was to get their feedback in session. And so working, city staff, working with the consulting team here tonight, incorporate what we heard and we'll be back to you in the coming months.
Okay. Thanks Rita and Laura. Appreciate your, your input and we'll be in touch with, if anybody else wants to interject anything into that. We'll connect that with you with Mike.
Thank you for the time tonight. It was helpful to listen to what you were thinking about and your concerns so we can address them at the next stage.
Yeah.
Yep, very much.
Thank you. Okay, any unfinished business?
Here on commission, I have nothing further for you tonight.
Okay. Commissioners report June 8th, City Council meeting, new elementary school at 2410 Holloway Avenue East.
Here on commission, yeah, I can provide a quick update on that project. City Council bid review, the request for a conditional use permit and design review for the new elementary school at 3410 Holloway. As a reminder, that's where the existing Maplewood Middle School is located and the school district intends to tear that building down and build a new elementary school. The city council had approved all the requests that were issued by the school district. So that project is able to move forward with building permit.
Okay, good. And no staff presentations, I imagine?
Here on commission, no, nothing prepared. But I just wanted to put in a plug for the next Planning Commission meeting. I will send out a calendar invite in the next week. At this point, is intended to be another Zoom meeting. But we'll, we'll have continued dialogue if that changes, if conditions change. But we do know we do have items. It's annual review and discussion on the capital improvement plan. It always comes every summer for the Planning Commission. But also we'll be looking at the plan unit development ordinance. And it's some changes that staff will be proposing. Not how it's enacted or how we use plan unit development, but just typing out, there's some kind of loose ends on how, when we approve a plan unit development and how it gets recognized on the official map, zoning map of the city. So kind of real planner in, in the weeds. But we feel that there's some changes that need to be made to make it more effective and more clear. So we'll walk through that at the Friday. So again, we're using this opportunity as we typically have a role in development this time anyway of our calendar year. And we're using this as a good time to look at our zoning code and bring things before you to make ultimate recommendations that we bring to the council for decision-making. So that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Is the car dealership going to have a grand opening over there on 61?
Mercedes?
Yeah.
They still have some work to do that, now they're, they just applied for the permit for the demo of the old part of the building. So while the new stuff is up, they still have some site work. And I know they'd want to celebrate their new facility at some point. So there's nothing planned, but we'll stay tuned for how that could work out.
Okay. And the, and the home on, at St. North, is that's, that's moving forward there?
Yeah, Chair and Commission, correct. They got city council approval there and they're, they have not indicated that anything has changed with their intention. So they, they had always planned a late summer, early fall start. At this point, we have no reason to believe anything otherwise, but yeah. Moving forward with that intention.
And, and then the convenience store in front of Rainbow, what's, what's, what's up?
Sure. And so, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That was at your last Planning Commission meeting. Actually, the applicants asked the council to table that item because they made a ordinance request. Currently, the city regulates liquor stores to be set back a half mile from each other. And this grocery store is asking the city council to take another look at that ordinance. And I can tell you now, it's Hy-Vee who has made that request. And they've made that directly to the city. And so they thought it would be opportune to, that's a direct to the city council that the liquor store distance requirement is not in the zoning code. So that request goes right to the city council for their consideration. And Hy-Vee wanted the council to consider their items at the same time. So the council has not made a final decision on that. And city staff is developing a plan. We need to do some outreach to existing liquor store licenses, license holders to get their feedback on what they think of a potential change. And then ultimately, the city council will make a final decision on that.
Tough call.
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that up. That's an important update. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Bill, was that your last, last word?
That's my last word.
Okay. Well, I make a motion, we adjourn then. Thanks for your, your input tonight, Bill.